Please stand for the pledge.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting for Tuesday, February 1st nineteen or 2022. I will add, ask the council to add, under new business, Andy Spillman would like to speak on an opportunity. And if that's okay with the council, please approve the agenda as amended. Marv?
I would add a request under home business.
Is that a request? I guess you're gonna present. Okay. Anything further? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
I'd make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion, Marv, second, Jenny. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tonight's consent agenda includes amendments from the council minutes of January 18th, tree commission January 19th, utility commission January 26th, the licenses except gambling permits, bark for bingo on March 15th and April 19th. Also included, other regular bills.
I'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion by Jason, second by Jenny. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Department adds. Department adds. Got a lot of them here tonight, this afternoon. Must be on the clock yet, right? Okay. Tax abatement extension request for the Guardian Inn. I believe Drew will probably take this.
Drew Hagy, Development Director, on page 33 of the packet, there is a short memo outlining information regarding the Guardian Inn. And the discussion we had on December 21st was regarding the Guardian Inn and, you know, the change in the classification of the property from commercial to residential. And that it would be one more year before that takes place. You know, there was information regarding the commercial tax rate in 2021, 22, and 23. And then when 23 is when it goes to residential. And that's based on, you know, the value that's there now. We did approve the tax abatement for the new value or the improved value. So the existing, you know, taxes would be there and then new value would be abated for five years. You know, that was to help get that project done and to fill the financing gap there. You know, the request from the Guardian Inn owners was looking at a gap of that change in value from commercial to residential, which when it's commercial, it's $46,444 in 2022. And then 2023 it'd go to $26,000. So that gap is approximately $20,000. That is the reasoning for the request of the 20,000, or trying to fill that gap of $20,000 by, you know, having a two-year extension to the tax abatement. So going from five years to seven years. The council requested that we outline a few different options for you to consider. So the one option would be approve a two-year extension of the tax abatement as the request has been submitted from the Guardian Inn owners. Now, request was just through a letter outlining this. Offer a one-year extension of the tax abatement as a compromise. You know, they were trying to figure this out, you know, again, based on our last discussion. We didn't have all the information, you know, again, for thinking about this at that time. You know, it's not saying, hey, it's a, you know, unexpected cost for construction. This was an unexpected cost because they didn't know on the classification change when that would happen. So that was just, you know, not having all the information. So then saying, hey, you're partly responsible and we can help you out here. You know, we want to get housing done. We want to be able to, you know, grow, you know, that not only just the tax base, but support our existing businesses through housing. And then that third option would just say, you know, we approve the five-year and deny any extension at this time. And anything the city does is independent of the county and school. So after you guys have your discussion, I can then take that to the county and school and see what their thoughts are at that point. So, you know, I can answer additional questions as well and then we can have some discussion here.
One question I have right now is, are we independent of the county and school? Could we say yes, they say no, and we can just do ours? Okay. All right. And so we're kind of independent in this first decision of what we want to do. But that 20,000 is conclusive of all three entities, correct? Okay. I guess that's my questions. I'll ask the council if they have any questions.
So Drew, it's my understanding that the beginning of January is when it's classified, whether it's commercial or residential?
Yes.
So do we know, were they done so that it was classified as residential in January of this year? Or that will be next year, so it'll be a year later?
So the classification as of January 1, 2022 was residential. We approved a conditional use in 2020. If, you know, you would have worked with the existing owners, they didn't close at that time yet. But if they would have worked with the existing owners and said, hey, this conditional use is approved, we're gonna not do the apartment or the hotel use for the two or three months right away in the beginning of the year, then you probably could have got that changed right away. It's, you're talking about that two or three months impacting the whole year.
Were they completed with the project on 1/1/22?
They're still remodeling that middle building, but the use of the space is an apartment. So they could have not started a project on January 1, 2021 and just said, hey, the conditional use is approved, we're gonna not use this as an apartment, talk to the county assessors, or not use this as a hotel, we are going to use it as an apartment, start, you know, and then start to remodel at that point. That would have worked as well. But they didn't do that because they weren't aware of that cut date.
I think to answer Councilmember Farag's question, the state of the remodel doesn't have an impact on this tax classification nor the amount. It was based on the tax classification and use of the property as of January 1, 2021. So the remodeling that's happening currently, now the garage is being built to use is residential. And so they're improving that residential use. So the classification is set for '22, which is, will impact '23 taxes. But the remodeling affects the valuation and the valuation is abated because any of the new value was abated. So it doesn't really matter if the remodeling is underway or more is added to it. They won't impact this classification. It's clear as mud, I'm sure.
I have another question. Maybe this is for Andy. Was there anything in the conditional use that they had to be done by a certain date? Did you catch my question, Andy?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I think your question was, anything about date in the condition use permit? Then there, there wasn't, no. I mean, we can't really put timeframes on them. As long as they, as long as they start to build out and they, they meet the conditions that we put on it, they're, they're allowed to. Yeah.
I just couldn't remember if there was a condition on timing or anything, so, okay.
Not that I remember.
Okay. Marv?
Drew, did you, you happen to discuss the compromise with them at all?
Yeah, I did share the three options that we were presenting. You know, their request is trying to fill that $20,000 gap. You know, part of this is renegotiating with, with High Life as well. This was just something that added, you know, additional costs to the project, so.
I think that was one of my questions earlier too was, or my thoughts to to you was, will High Life take any of this into consideration? And any thoughts on that? I mean, did they make any effort to help them?
So I know the developer is talking with High Life on that. I don't have specifics on that. One thing I did want to point out when you're thinking about the, you know, the estimated annual tax abatement, you know, the city's portion is $6,058 a year. That's what we estimated. The county would be at $3,268 a year and school, $2,408. So that was that total of that $11,734, you know, so per year. And they're requesting, you know, two years because then it's just, you know, cleaner. But, you know, that is their request and then we have these three options for you to think about.
Okay. Yes, correct. So the city's portion, what we're really doing is $12,116 is what we're talking about. The other entities have to make their...
If you do both years.
Yeah, if we do both years. Is it, is it possible to do one year at a time? Just a random question.
The one year of it is the middle position, the...
I, I think what the mayor's asking, could you do it one year and see how this goes for next year?
Oh, yeah.
And then revisit this. Because I don't... You probably could, mayor. I think that's the answer is you could probably make it work technically, but it's gonna be a lot more work for us, the owner and the county assessor, to go back and make these changes every year versus maybe a one-time adjustment in this.
Sure.
Just...
Well, I, I guess I would just be upset if they had a break from High Life exceeding the total value of the $23,000 or whatever that was. We're saying 20,000 and, you know, not that we have control about that or nor would we hear about it. But I guess I, this is public information. I'd share this with whatever decision with High Life and, to be fair, because I don't want to set a precedence by this is the biggest thing that I, I, I feel. And I think, I, I understand the justification and I, I think that's valid, that class change. I, I really think that's probably valid. You know, with the timing, but I guess we'll see what the council says. Other questions?
I mean, we definitely are not talking about, hey, it's a cost overrun, that's the reason we're extending it for the two years. We're talking a change of classification. That was something that they didn't have the information or control of.
Nor did we, but should we have known that or somebody have known that? That's the question. And you can point fingers, it could have been you, it could have been them. You know, this is something that, you know, it, it could happen again. Unlikely, I think, because we mostly deal with the residential individual properties where it's single family, right, for the most part. But if someone does a duplex, different things, you know, it, it could be... I think it opens the opportunity, if a mistake was made again, they can come back and get it changed. But I would say that it should be something in your toolbox to say, reminder, see if there's any classic, if there's a classification change that it's looked at prior to making that original agreement, if that makes sense.
After I've given it some thought, I myself would be comfortable with a moderate position, the middle one, offering a one-year extension of the tax abatement, just because of the circumstances and such. I don't know if anyone else feels the same.
I was kind of, in a way, agreeing with the mayor in, in that if, if you're setting a precedent, that if a mistake was made, that we're gonna go back and change. My question is, I guess, in the due diligence of this project, you know, where, whose responsibility was it to, to find this information out? I, I feel that we shouldn't take the brunt of it because of something that was overlooked?
I mean, it is a private developers' project. So, I mean, they're the, you know, they do multiple projects. This is just the first time they've come across, you know, something like this. And I wasn't aware of it, so I wasn't, you know, I didn't point it out. And it wasn't something else that anyone else pointed out as well. So, I mean, this, you know, went through multiple different channels and no one said, hey, you know, this, this is a date that you really need to be watching out for.
Was there any indication that the county assessor, I mean, they didn't provide information until basically we asked on the classification change? Or is that, that's nothing we look at?
No. No, it's nothing we would normally look at. The property owner purchased the property and got their assessment notice or evaluation notice in the mail like everyone else and said, oh, hey, I'm being classified as commercial. Why is that? And asked the question of the assessor. And as of January 1, 2021, it was being used as a commercial property, as a hotel, and being rented out. So therefore, that's your value, that's your classification, and that's what it is. You know, if there's, you know, something that was missed along the line, I would kind of err towards it was maybe the buyer's attorney that maybe should have caught this. But that's only my, my thought on it. But that's neither here nor there.
I would add one other thing is I think we are cutting it by the total amount. Our share is probably, I don't know, $1,200 or some number. But the $23,468 was actually the request, I believe, in December that we gave that target of...
That wanted two years.
Yep. Yep. That's what they wanted. We went to 20. So, I mean, we did something. Not the whole thing, but I mean, we did take some reduction.
I guess it kind of goes back to what I had said from the start. I think that an attorney doing it would have caught it. But now that you know, you would catch it, correct?
Yeah, hopefully anyone that's working, you know, on a project in our office would then, you know, have this discussion. I don't see there being that many changes, you know, in use-wise. So it wouldn't be something that impacts a number of projects, but there is a potential for it.
I'm trying to just think, are duplexes considered the same? No? Okay. Four? Then it is, four or more is, okay. Okay.
I guess my thought is, you know, the $12,000, whatever it is, I don't believe it's gonna break the city. And they are developers who possibly may find another project to do. So that would be my thought.
And finally, my last comment, I think, is, would we do, do this for anybody else and consider it? I would say yes, to promote housing within our community. So I'd, I would err toward, well, I've stated my opinion. Counsel?
I guess there is three things that the city needs and it's housing, housing, housing. So, but when I think about a developer in Minnesota, probably should know that when they're working with that many dollars. So I guess I tend to lean more toward the compromise.
And so have we already compromised with the 20,000 is gonna be the question? And...
I think you have a hard time saying it's just gonna be the 20,000 because the city is either gonna abate their whole portion or not. And the school district and the county are gonna have their own independent decisions or not. So to say it's just gonna be 20,000 or it's gonna be this amount is very difficult. I don't think you can do that.
So, okay.
You're being asked for the $12,116.
Period.
Period. And then you can make a recommendation to those other boards or not for them to follow suit.
Recommendation to the... I don't know that that's our position on this.
No, certainly, but it's, and as it was outlined in the memo, you can control yours. And then whether or not you, your decision is contingent on the other bodies or not. That's what I mean by recommendation. Either if you say, yep, we'll go for one year, two years with the contingency that school and/or county follow suit, or whether you just have a blanket decision on your portion and leave them to act independently. That's, that's up to you guys.
I would, for myself, I would be comfortable with going with a one-year extension and just doing our part and leaving it to the county and the school to do what they feel is best.
Is... If we, and just a question for you on this, prior to you making a motion, if you're gonna, is if we do one year, can the county do two years in the school?
They would have the option, yes. Assume what you're looking at is balancing off, we put as much in as they put it in. And since we have the biggest piece of it, one year of ours would equal two years of someone else's. I assume that's where you were going with this.
I'm not going anywhere. It's the council's decision, so I'm open to motions from the council.
I'd like to make a motion to take number two, to offer a one-year extension of the tax abatement as a compromise. And knowing that this is, this is going to be a decision that the county and school will make on their own.
And I would second that.
Okay, the motion is to, for the city's position, is to offer a one-year abatement. And the county will make their own decisions. No recommendation included?
Correct.
No contingency.
No, yeah.
Contingency.
I'm gonna ask for questions again.
I guess mine would be, what if they come back next year and say, you know, if you'd have done this to start with, you know, the two years, are we gonna have to address it? I won't, but you guys might have to, somebody might have to address it somewhere in line. So I guess I would go along with two years. I could do that.
And I guess my, oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
My thought is if, if they were already given an abatement, that they needed to follow the, the... Follow the laws or the, the recommendations of the abatement. And I feel we've already given them an abatement and I don't feel an additional one is needed.
Other questions in regards to a comment that I heard from this table or that table was housing, housing, housing. And I am, I've got to be supportive of housing. And I honestly don't think change the classification would have been caught by anyone with the exception of the county assessor is where that answer came from.
I still feel that should have been part of the due diligence.
And that very well could be. Okay, motions on the table to approve a, unless there's any other questions. Motions on the table. This is to approve a one-year abatement by the city of Wyndham. Any further discussion? That's without contingencies to. Okay. Anything further? Hearing none? I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this, Steve.
Grunig?
Yes.
Farag?
No.
Quaid?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
And that passes three to two. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad all the council people were here today. I would have had a hard time with that one. You guys, did you ask your appropriate questions? I appreciate that. Okay, Telecom Rate Recommendation Resolution Establishing Rates, Charges, and Fees.
Good day, Mayor, City Council members and city administrator. I'm Jeff Dana, Telecom Department General Manager. And before you tonight, we have a couple of action items from the Telecom Commission to establish rates and make some changes to some existing rates. The first one, the new TLS Transparent Land Services levels and rates. Due to industry need, we needed to add some more levels of a service, meaning other ranges, and redo some of the pricing and the discounts and non-recurring fees on that to reflect the industry rates that we're seeing. Last time we did an adjustment on that was like back in 2017. And currently, we have about 12 circuits that are on the TLS level. Those aren't affected if they're underneath a agreement term of a three-year or five-year or even a yearly monthly one. But if approved going forward, if there's a new connection, then we would use these rates and discount levels. The second one is establish residential email rate. With our continuing costs, they keep going up with the email service that we have, our licenses, our email spam server, they're end of life and they're gonna be, need to be updated and changed out next year for the spam server. The email system that we use, the ICE Warp, they are changing their platform to a different, basically a hosted type platform. Costs are gonna go up on that quite a bit if we stay with that. We're looking at other platforms to see what's available. But after discussing with the Telecom Commission, they wanted to incorporate a residential email account rate of $1 per month per account to help cover the costs of the system and the future upgrades that we need to be doing on that system. Other hosted platforms, you can see $3.50 to $6 per mailbox a month rate that they charge. We have about 1,100 email accounts on the system, so we need revenues. So we would generate, help our licensing renewals, upgrades for the email spam servers and staff time and build reserves for future upgrades.
So that $1 raises, what, 12,000 a year? 13, 13, two? Okay, whatever that is. Yeah. Okay.
And one thing to point out too is most of these licenses that we have, they go by how many number of boxes you have. It used to be, here's a range of up to 1,200 is this much. 1201 and up is this much money. Now they're saying just it's per license, what they are per account. So if we have 1,100 email accounts, for example, this gets approved and we notify customers if they have, in the past, we've given them five email accounts with their internet service. And if they're using all five, that would be $5 a month. Or if they're not using them all, then they can go ahead and tell us that they don't want those, we can remove them. That's five less email accounts that we have to account for on the... That's five less email accounts that we have to account for on the licensing with the newer platform that we would have to go to. So it gives us some cost savings. Other companies have basically done away with their law, their email, uh, hosted services that they have, and encourage everybody to go to Gmail and the other Yahoo and other accounts that are out there, and with ease of working with the other devices. Going forward, a hosted platform a little bit better, we don't have a server or a piece of equipment running in the building, you got to pay for electricity and heat and cool to maintain it, uh, hosted platform would be nice. It also means that if there is a problem and, let's say, internet goes out, we have no connectivity, you, you won't be able to get to those email accounts, uh, either, but that's kind of why we haven't redone a pass on our system.
Any questions, Marv?
On the eleven hundred email accounts, how many of them are, would you think are multiple?
Like a duplicate? Uh, we really don't have duplicates, uh, on there unless there's like some error in the system. You would have like a, a customer would have maybe two, three, or up to five email accounts, uh, that they can have at one address, one account would be under, underneath all those, uh, uh, email accounts to use. But duplication wise, we, we don't, it alarms out if it's already in use. So we can't duplicate numbers, or duplicate accounts. We can make ALS accounts and other things that they want, but, uh, follow them all down to one, one email if they want, but, uh...
Was there also a thought on the alternative to raise the cost of a telecom account? Like it's still offering that free, free email?
You mean, uh, increase the, uh, internet, uh, internet cost? They ran through that at that meeting, and they, well, they felt just by putting a simple cost on the account that would be a little bit easier versus doing a widespread increase. Uh, like I said, if somebody doesn't want those accounts, we can clean those out, remove them out of the system, so you know, we can maybe go from eleven hundred down to, you know, seven hundred fifty accounts. Uh, and the licensing would drop down enough that it might be a little bit more, uh, better, but, you know, going forward, they just, hosted platforms is where it's gonna be in per number of accounts, email accounts is what they're gonna charge us, the way everything's looking. It's not, you know, we could never probably get back to that twelve hundred dollars a year for a license like we have now for our email service. Uh, it's looking at like almost double or triple, depending on which company we've talked to.
I just, I concede value in people that have WyndhamNet email, because it gets out there, and it's like advertising, you know?
Yes.
So if, you can go to a free Gmail, why wouldn't people do that then, and we would lose, eventually lose all those email accounts?
Right.
Um, the, it said in here, the email, if we do go to the dollar a month, that would start in May, so I'm assuming notice will go out to all the people that have email accounts, notifying them that in May it'll start charging a dollar per an account, so then we may see at that point in time whether people are gonna fall off, you know, not, if they don't use that account or whatever, they may not wanna pay that extra fee, but as long as notices are going out beforehand, so people are aware of this and can make changes if they need to.
Yes, that's correct. We wanna make sure that we had ample time to notify our customers, and they can make the decision, uh, on what they would like to do. So, you know, a dollar a month isn't that much to, you know, when you consider everything, uh, with it, so, uh, unless you wanna raise up the internet rate, you know, dollar, which you'll, we could do that too if you wish, but that would be another, another time.
Is there a way to look at the accounts, um, you know, maybe someone has an account that's not being used and just cancel it? And that way there would be no additional charge, so your numbers come down?
Uh, in the past, we've looked at orphaned accounts, ones that were not being used anymore or active, and I'll be quite honest with you, we would disable them or even delete them, literally get a phone call two days later that, hey, I wanna use these now, they're not working. Or, this is my kid's account, and he needs it back, and we gotta go through and restore it, and it takes my uh, knock technician probably about good twenty to thirty minutes to go through and pull it back out of the, uh, backup files and put it back in there, so. If, if they're gonna be, uh, uh, removed, we, now we just disable them, and if they, we don't hear anything today for like thirty days, then we would probably remove those, but we try to work out that when somebody shuts off the service, as far as their internet, and they have an email account tied to that, that that gets, uh, disconnected and shut down at that time also. So to have our email service, you need to have a, uh, active email, uh, account, it needs to be underneath a, uh, uh, internet service connection from us.
Jason.
Is it all feasible, uh, when you notice those orphan accounts, uh, to notify them with a special little note in their bill or something, that they are paying one dollar for these orphan email accounts? Is that too much?
Uh, normally we'd probably just give an announcement that, uh, you know, here's the, uh, options you have, if you wanna continue, it's gonna be a dollar, or whatever. Uh, if you wanna continue, do nothing, if not, please contact, you know, City Hall, and, uh, we'll get that email account removed. There's, uh, some of them that have been in the system for a while, uh, they should all be accountable for, but there's some that slip in, uh, are made and maybe don't get entered on that person's account, so we don't know who it is, you know, it could be, you know, uh, a, you know, bubba@wyndhamnet.com, but nobody really owns it, but there's all kinds of spam mail coming into it, filling up. So, you know, we do look at those at times to see what's not really active. I mean, we'll, we'll have some that have, uh, nine gig of information in their email account, and they're not using it. It's just they've got literally about twelve to thirteen years of email and spam coming in, and it's never been deleted. Or empty your delete file is, is another one, so. Uh, we only have so much limitation on our, uh, storage on that system. Couple gigabyte used to be a lot back then, now we're looking at close to like eleven, uh, gigabytes of, uh, email data on our system. And we have to have that space to store that, and every six months we have to move it up a little bit more.
Okay, the council wished to take action on the request. Yeah, there is a resolution prepared on this because it's a rate.
I'd like to, uh, introduce the resolution establishing rates, charges, and fees for Telecommunication Enterprise Fund.
And that's including both, correct? On here it does, but you could...
Yes.
That includes both in the resolution, okay.
All right, I would second.
Resolution introduced by Jason and seconded by Marv. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call. Farag.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you council members, and thank you, Steve.
Okay, I was reminded we have to be done by six. Okay. Uh, resolution, this is accepting a federal grant from the American Rescue Plan Act, the Airport Rescue Grant Agreement. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the federal government is continuing to put out some of the ARPA money, um, some of it's going in different categories, this one happens to be a Federal Aviation Administration, FAA. Um, they had CARES Act monies that were distributed, they're now distributing some, um, other dollars that come out. Um, this particular grant is for, out of the ARPA money, thirty-two thousand dollars, um, to the Wyndham Airport. Uh, we have four years to spend the money as you do the other ARPA funds. Um, these though specifically have to be spent at the airport for eligible costs. Uh, the one, um, one caveat that, that I did see in the grant agreement, we do have to have a posting on the, um, arrival, departure, building door that said master required in this facility, because it is, we're accepting federal money to support the airport, and so, um, now typically there aren't more than one person, you, you know, one or two in the A D building, but we put a sign on that said master required in the facility. Not outdoors, not in the hangars, because those are privately rented, but we will have to put a sign on the door, that's pretty much the only, you know, hook in here to do the things that were, that's inconsistent with what we're already doing, so.
Would that be a perpetual thing, or just for a time?
Ju- as long as the CDC requires.
Okay.
The one that's nice thing about this is while these federal funds can be used to match other federal funds, so we can continue to get our projects hundred percent federally funded. Steve, would you have a couple examples of what the grant could be spent for? The air, the airport has, has C I P, um, so this year's C I P, we've got, I'm not sure why this is blanking out and off. This year, in the C I P, we've got the, uh, uh, AWAS, the, um, radio control, and then we've also got the beacon, that's probably something you're familiar with out there, we've got a, the electric department helps out and changes the, uh, the beacon, um, head as the lights, um, die, or the, uh, gearbox inside the beacon as it spins around wears out, uh, we're working on a new, uh, LED beacon out there for that, that's on, so that would go towards helping pay for those two projects. Um, longer term, um, there are some, as I mentioned, some additional federal dollars that are coming to the airport through the entitlement process over the next four years. Um, the Airport Commission will be meeting here, hopefully in February, um, if not March, and kind of look at expanding that capital, um, list. I know that one large project that they've kind of had their eye on is a crosswind runway. That's a multi-year project, because there's environmental that needs to be done with it, and then you do land acquisition and planning and then construction about four years later. Um, we do have that piece of property to the east, the Stroud property that given, been given to us, and we're gonna utilize a good chunk of that with the, uh, with the crosswind runway, so we wouldn't have to acquire a whole lot of additional property, but that's one big ticket thing that they've had on their wish list, and if the additional federal dollars come through in that entitlement process, I think that's probably something they'll be looking at moving forward, and you'll hear a lot more of that.
I'm looking for council action on this resolution.
I'd, uh, like to introduce this resolution authorizing, uh, us to execute, um, not to execute, to execute U S Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Rescue Grant Agreement.
I would second.
Resolution introduced by Jason and seconded by, by Jenny. Any further discussion? Roll call? Quaid.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
And that carries, hey, one question on LED lights, does that transmit through fog, rain, snow, just as regular light does? Does anybody know that? I mean, will you see the haze going out when it's?
I, I, yeah.
Streetlights seem to, right? Okay, I was just curious.
Typical be probably even a little higher wattage than what was out there too, so, but we haven't done specs on that yet, so I can't give you additional information.
Okay. Twenty twenty-two, part-time seasonal and temporary non-union wage rates. Steve, this is from you, I believe.
It is. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Every year we do this for seasonal and part-time employees, as Minnesota, um, minimum wage adjusts with, uh, inflation. Um, this year it went from, I think, ten oh eight to ten thirty-three as minimum. Um, there is, I, as I noted in the memo, there is a training wage that you can have for persons under twenty, um, for ninety consecutive days, but we have not been using that caveat, as it's difficult enough to find part-time seasonal help. And so, um, what we're recommending to the council is that we do our annual, uh, adjustment here. For the pool, we're gonna, um, go from the ten thirty-three minimum up to twelve seventy-five. I believe that was twelve and a quarter last year, so we upped the high end a little bit higher. And then the pool manager, um, I think that went from thirteen and a half from, to, um, fifteen, up to fourteen fifteen, so the bottom raised a little bit and the top stayed where it was right now. Um, as far as that seasonal part-time or, and non-union part-time wage, uh, we upped that starting to eleven from the ten, I think it was ten thirty, ten twenty-five or ten oh eight, uh, before we upped that, as we're having a little, you know, difficulty recruiting, uh, you noted that with, uh, several of our other temporary hires or part-time hires at the liquor store. And so we upped that to eleven, uh, and then raised the top end to, um, thirteen, I think that was twelve fifty before. And instead of a five-year scale to get to the top pay, we shortened the scale to, to two years, um, so that there's a initial hire at eleven, after six months, eleven seventy-five, so that's a nice bump there to keep that person, and then another seventy-five cent bump to twelve fifty in year one, and then thirteen at the end of year two, and then this will adjust annually as, as those numbers change, but, um, so we'd made those couple of structural changes in here to maybe better able to retain and retract a workforce, so. And this was brought in past Department Heads' last meeting, and so we're everybody's on, on board.
And I'm sure as far as the fiscal impact, you already had this budgeted in the, uh, our budget this year, Steve?
As I noted on, on below, uh, we did have the wage adjustments in there, uh, we, uh, we had some of them slightly lower at the ten thirty-three, and if we start at ten fifty or so, that it's a minimal impact. And, but we did have those top ends, the old top ends, and we just shortened the scale, so it'll have a little bit of an impact, and, but not, we don't have too terrible money that are on, on that long, other than maybe at the arena, or I'm sorry, at the pool or at the liquor store if we can keep them, so.
Okay, uh, council, any further questions? Uh, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the, uh, uh, part-time seasonal and temporary non-union wage rates?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Twenty twenty-two, mayor appointments and reappointments, uh, to the boards and commissions. Okay. Um, we do have, uh, several on here this month, and I do wanna add one more to the recommendation, and I'll just list that first as I'm going through here. Tom Riordan, uh, currently on our utility commission, I'd like to reappoint Tom, uh, for another term. Also included are to appoint Corey Malakowski to the Telecom Commission, uh, appoint Danny Martinez to the Park and Rec Commission, appoint Paul Johnson to the Park and Rec Commission, a note on that, just so the council's aware, Paul Johnson works in town or throughout our county, uh, as Emergency Management Director, but he is, uh, a resident outside of city limits, so just wanna make you aware of that. We do, we have done this in other, uh, commissions, and, and Paul has young kids that, um, are in there, and he's softball and that kind of stuff too, so I think a good tie there. And to appoint Tom Siegfried to the Economic Development Authority. Any questions? Hearing none, I'd make this recommendation to fill these vacancies.
I'd make the motion to approve the mayor's appointments to city boards and commissions.
Second.
Uh, motion, Marv, I'll take Jenny's second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And if the council, and I, I don't know if I even asked the council here, because I missed the first meeting of the year, but um, if anybody wants, uh, a change from their appointments, uh, or for me to give consideration to, just please contact me, uh, individually, Steve?
Mayor, also at, uh, budget time, just a reminder, we had talked about maybe- Mayor, also at budget time, just a reminder, we had talked about maybe forming an ad hoc committee. For the community center board reps, library board reps and a couple of council members to kind of discuss synergies of operations, things like that. And so we were going to do that when appointments were made, so just so that's on everyone's mind too.
And I would say people who are interested in this, contact me. So we don't discuss it in front of everybody here because I, I, I just, I want to hear input on who would like to be. Very good. Thank you for reminding us, Steve. Okay, new business. Anybody have new business or Steve or? This is the one we added.
Yeah, this one we added. So if you want to shut your mic off quick, I'll just introduce it quick and then Andy can kind of take it from there. We were contacted by the city of Worthington this week. They had. Lost their building inspector who had retired. They hired a new building official. And he's going through the process of, of training and getting his license. Much the same situation that we were in a few years ago when we contracted for Steve Carson to give us a hand. So Andy's been in touch with city Worthington as I have, talking with them about what some of their, you know, wants and expectations might be as far as. They're looking for some help to temporarily kind of, I won't say look over the shoulder, but kind of. Mentor the new person coming along so they can get their time in and get their point so they can get their full license. So they've asked us if we would be willing to help out. And, you know, as a city-to-city thing, you know, it's something we certainly can find ourselves in the same situation. So I'm more than happy to help out another community. I guess I'll let Andy kind of go through the nuts and bolts of it. We think, you know, we can do this and still, you know, keep. Andy would still commit to doing Wyndham's workload and really won't eat into our, our stuff too terribly bad, so I'll let Andy go.
And I would like just for you to add one more thing. We have, you know, as you mentioned, kind of that past precedence other way around, but. That we've done this before and I do believe that there was an agreement at that time and whether you or Andy comment is fine. With me if Andy knows that, but I would like to just touch base with that after we get there, so. Andy, you're on.
Thank you. Andy Spielman, building and zoning official. Yeah, I think Steve covered it pretty well. This all just kind of came to light the last couple of days here with Worthington contacting us, but it's. Very similar to the path that I took. They hired a person that carried no certification with the state. They did just recently pass their limited, so. What we're proposing to help them cover is just some of their commercial and what we call non-exempt buildings. That person. I think they've submitted their application. It hasn't been approved yet, but. They'll, they'll carry their, their building official limited certification. They'll be designated as the building official for the city of Worthington, so we're really just covering. A very small portion of their, of their projects, which would be just their commercial building. That person as a certified building official limited can do inspections on those projects under the direction of a building official, which is exactly what I did with Steve Carson. It takes about a full year to get the required experience and points that you need before you can test into the full certification, so. A rough timeframe of this, they're basically asking to help cover that for about a year. Kind of depending on how the, the situation works out there, but I think it's a good opportunity to. To work with them too. There's not a lot of building officials out there, so I was kind of. Happy to see that they were willing to hire somebody and train them in and go through this process because we, we certainly do need more building officials and I think this is. Something that could benefit both cities in the future to work together and, and share services, just covering, you know, vacations and things like that. So I, Steve can kind of go through the, the details if there are any more, but that's kind of what, what we're asking.
Andy, I had one question for you first and maybe the council does too before we get back to Steve. Is, is there an estimated time commitment in a week or anything and will you be able to cover that? Or continue to cover all of the city of Wyndham's needs at the same time?
Yeah, what they're, what they were asking for was two hours, two days a week. That's highly flexible. The rough agreement that we kind of drafted and proposed to them was for up to six hours a week, just in case there was some. Extenuating circumstances and some flexibility. I'm not anticipating. To work six hours a week less for the city of Wyndham, I guess. Just a real brief conversation I had with them. It's going to be an early morning type thing where I'll leave, I'll leave Wyndham at six thirty, seven o'clock and spend. Maybe an hour with their building official in their office before city hall opens, signing permits, going through the plans, going through the projects that they have. Maybe spend an hour or so out actually on some projects with them and then be back in Wyndham and, you know, if it's. If it leads to a couple later nights, I guess so be it, but. I think, does that answer? Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, just for Andy first before we go to Steve's or do you want to hear Steve's? Okay, Steve, regarding contractual stuff, just a little explanation on that.
Sure. For folks that maybe hadn't been on the council real long, we had done a shared position once before. When SMBS was getting started, Southwest Minnesota Broadband, we did share a telecom manager. And we developed a rather robust agreement there where. Again, this position, Andy would continue to be an employee of the city of Wyndham, all the insurances, all these things are still, just like he's. Exactly doing his job as it would be. What Worthington would be responsible for is paying us for build hours. That he's on site, travel time and then prorate any vacation sick, any things like that would get prorated between the parties. And if we're looking at the maximum, like we said, up to six hours a week, that'd be three hundred and twelve hours in a year and so. That's about fifteen percent and so that's kind of what we're looking at. So a portion of cell phone, things like that would be built back, you know, accordingly. As far as liabilities, if anybody's in a, you know, city, city Wyndham vehicle, we're, we've got it, we're covered it. We would charge them mileage, you know, back and forth. If Andy were on site in there and. In Worthington's vehicle, visiting sites, then they're responsible for insurance and, and liability for those things. So we've got a, a fairly well crafted agreement and. Andy and I talked yesterday and so I pulled that old agreement, got it revised, tweaked a few things, Andy looked at it. We did send it to Worthington today just to have them take a look at it so they can start the ball rolling on their end because they're between a rock and a hard place and. And in case we needed to get, go further and go through another council meeting if there was some additional questions, I wanted to have enough lead time to get that done, so we. So we are that far in the process, but I guess right now we're just kind of looking for your, you know, direction if you're okay with. Us doing this and helping out the other community. We'll finalize the agreement, you know, probably run it by Ron quick and. Obviously the Worthingtons would have to approve it and whatnot, but it's just more or less whether you, you know, want us to continue to go down this road or not, so.
Thank you, Steve. One thing I thought is. I, I think we should be supportive of this. And I think a. I think we should act to allow Steve to. Which he already has for the most part, generate and execute the agreement. And my only provision, I'd like to see him send that to the, well, you could send it to the whole council. I guess, or at least personnel is what I was thinking of if, if you want to, so. So the council's aware of it, but I think this should take action now so both parties can execute and get Andy to work, so. That's my thoughts, council. Jason, you had a question?
I want to hear from Jenny, if she has a thought.
Well, thanks for letting me go first. My thought is it's just good to have a good collaboration with our neighboring communities. Because if once he is fully, you know, on board in the next year. You know, if something happens to Andy, you know, he takes vacation or he has medical leave or, you know, something in the future, hopefully they would repay that. You know, and share some kind of position if we need to. So I think that just makes good sense that we, you know, work well with our neighboring counties. And do this and then my only thing is, you know, as long as Andy's willing to take this additional responsibility on for the year, I would be in support of it.
Yeah, I, no, I agree with everything that Jenny said and I, I really think it's going to be less than more. We have six hours a week, but. Just having gone through it myself and knowing the person that they have there, he's, he's very capable. So I'm pretty comfortable taking on the, the extra workload.
Well, I'd, I'd be comfortable making a motion to go ahead and. Get this agreement moving forward.
Does that include authorizing Steve and myself to sign the agreement?
Yes.
I would second that.
Motion made by Jason, second Jenny. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is that good, Steve?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Andy, for doing that. Any other old business?
That was new.
No, that's what I said, any other old business? Is there any, Marv? No, we got it. Marv wanted to, sorry, I didn't write it down, Marv. I thought I'd remember. Marv had some request he wants us to consider.
Well, the Veterans Memorial project is at Lowman Park continues to move forward. I'm now working on the details. At the utility commission meeting. Last Wednesday, I asked the commission for permission. To connect the memorial lighting. To the streetlight circuit on highway sixty seventy-one. Being the streetlights were converted to LED over the past many years. There's plenty of capacity in the lighting circuit. To provide the lighting for the memorial and to control it, which is one of the big helps there. The utility commission granted the request to make the connection. Street lighting is funded. Through the city's general fund. A budgetary estimate. For the additional lighting cost would be approximately eighty dollars for a year. Could be somewhat less depending on the wattage. That is needed to effectively. Light the memorial. Our electric superintendent thought maybe we could do it with just a little bit less wattage than I proposed. So the request would be to fund the Veterans Memorial lighting. Cost. Through the general funds, a street lighting budget, so.
That wasn't budgeted for this year, right, Marv?
Yes.
Marv always says that, so.
I, I do know there's many, been more conversions, so there's probably some extra dollars left there.
That's perfect. I think that's a great request. Will this be, I mean, perpetual, would you say, or? Okay, and I have no problem with that. Just wanted to. That's how we're going to make the, or make the motion. I mean, this is going to be added to the city lights. I'm guessing there'll be all LED lights too, probably, Marv? Okay, so Marv is looking out. For costs, so, okay. Any discussion? Any comments? And I appreciate what the utility commission did too. Okay.
I'd be delighted to make a motion to go forward with the lighting at the memorial, the Veterans Memorial at Lowman Park.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, Jason, seconded by Lisa to approve the perpetual lighting, LED lighting at the Veterans Memorial. Any further discussion? I'd just say thank you, Marv, for bringing that up.
I just want to say thank you. I think that's a great idea and thank you for taking care of that to make the memorial look great. Our veterans deserve that.
I'm sure we'll have other things to, yeah, this is.
He's starting you slow.
That's fine. I think that's, he's doing a great job. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's see. Okay. Anything further? We'll go to comments. Jim?
I have nothing.
Jenny?
I just want to thank the people for the boards and commissions and, you know, thank you, Mayor, for. I know it's some work to make the phone calls and, and get the people to hopefully agree to participate in coming to sometimes monthly meetings. Without getting paid and, you know, sitting through sometimes they're an hour, sometimes they're three hours. But it's just, you know, shows the dedication of the people in our community that are willing to do that to improve, you know. Like for me, I think the park and rec, that's a really important board that I'm on and I like to see that we've got some additional people and. Some mixture of people on that board to really help promote our parks moving forward, so thank you.
Jenny, I'm going to make one comment. We still have potentially one more park and rec. We do have one that would renew, but I'm going to take an extra two weeks here to see if we can find somebody for that. And not burn people out either. Very busy people that are, that are part of some of these committees too. And we do need another one for telecom. So to a public park and rec or telecom as of now, I, we do have some. What the. Charter commission, but, yeah, we can get that there, but, yeah. But otherwise, for now, I, I think. Those two positions, one on park and rec and another one on telecom. Yeah, with that, Lisa.
I do not have any comments tonight.
Thank you for that. Jason?
It. I just want to share a little success that we can all have. Valentine's Day is still a couple of weeks away, so. Have a great holiday season and see you later.
Marv?
Just another request on that new committee. Wouldn't it be possible you send out a scope of what that committee would be looking at, so we have a.
Yeah, I think I'm going to leave that up to Steve to do that because it was talked a little bit around budget time.
I'm going to delegate it to the library director and the community center director as it was their, their idea.
And, and that's fine. You know, but. Would you review that, Steve? I mean, if you have them, whatever, and make sure we're inclusive on everything that we're thinking here, so. And some examples of what's going to be talked about, okay? Steve, did you have anything?
Just thank the council participants, yourself, council member Sherman, council member Farag and all the folks that attended the joint government meeting last night. I thought we had a good, okay, I didn't see it on your list, so. We, we had a good meeting. Cottonwood County representatives were there as well as Wyndham area school district. We had invited all the school districts that have territory in Cottonwood County as well as all the cities. Jeffers and Storden were unable to come, but we had representatives from Mountain Lake and Bingham Lake and, and Wyndham and, nope. And, and, yep. Yep, so it was pretty well attended. I know we had. Email from a couple of the other communities that couldn't do it that night, but they're interested in continuing, so. We had a very good discussion on ARPA funds, local economies and, and hiring and in the community and broadband, and I think there's going to be more discussion on broadband. That's. Going to be the topic of the next meeting for the group, so. So just, and then I did the minutes today, so those will be in your packet for the next, your next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Steve, and thanks for helping line all that up. Steve's kind of been the go-to guy on getting this organized, so I appreciate that. But, you know, and I will echo that, very good discussion, even though I was late. Thank you for, you two, for being prompt and on there on time. I also would echo, you know, that it's a, I thought that was a great starting meeting. I think it'll build from there. I was amazed of the kind of interest from our other, other communities, I guess, so. And I think it could be a very big deal with this broadband, you know, countywide type discussion that was held. So I think that could be, that'll be a great topic. I know that other communities are doing some things that were maybe on their own, that they may now look in partnerships to benefit everybody, so, you know, I think that was, that was very good. Once again, I'm very happy with the snow removal. I think that's been going well. Thank you for that. I haven't heard much of anything from the other departments as far as any issues. I'm happy we don't have to hear that, so thank you, community center. Thanks, Jeff. I'm really looking forward to this new rollout with whatever we're gonna do with the cable TV and transitioning to that and streaming, and I'm just, I'm looking forward to that. I do more practicing right now than I have in quite a while on streaming and with like YouTube TV and different other things, and, yeah, it's not that bad. You know, after you watch your kids do it a while and whatever, so I think it's, I think we can move there pretty easy in a transition mode. So looking forward to that. And, one, to our emergency services people, thank you also, including our police department and fire and rescue and all these folks. You know, it's challenging times around the country and, you know, I, but our people are up to it. I hear very good things around our community, too, so thank you to that. Housing, housing, housing. Thanks, Drew, for taking, taking that initiative, too. And I think I better be done. We only have fifteen minutes to spare. I was wrong at the beginning of the meeting. I thought, when I seen that agenda, I was like, wow, I'm gonna beat Jason's record. Not tonight, Jason. We'll adjourn by unanimous consent.